Hello, everybody.
Yeah.
It is May 16th, 2017. This is the City Council Work Session Meeting, City of Sims. Meeting is now called Order. It's 3:00. Roll call, please.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Watts.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Here.
Councilmember Platt.
Here.
Councilmember Shirey, after.
Very good. Number I, I'm number three, is approved of the minutes in previous work session council meeting. This is, of course, a review, and then we'll see if everybody accepts it or not. Because everyone, everyone should have the eight minutes in their packet. Please feel free to take your time, okay? Oh, you did. You have another packet.
You didn't get one?
I gave mine.
No, it's okay. I'll get Shannon, you can bring it over here.
Okay.
I gave you the minutes. I gave you the minutes.
Hi, Shannon. Mr. Watts, let me get his packet. Can you bring it over, please? Thank you.
Shannon, uh, Denise Smart will be here.
She's up there.
Oh, okay, I'll go.
She was hot.
Yeah.
Arms are warm.
Oh, she brought me something in print over here.
There it is. There are the minutes. They're not very long. Mayor, we approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In your post, minutes for the work session are approved. Presentations, we have two today. The first is Ms. Denise regarding the Memorial Day event.
Good afternoon. How are y'all doing?
Good.
This is a budgeted figure. It's basically about a council at $250. I'm just gonna have a little memorial pin to give people that come. We'll be well within budget for this amount. And it's gonna be just a small service at 6:30 on Memorial Day. We figured that way, everybody would've been done with their grilling and everything else, and so, you know, in hopes that maybe we can get a few more people to show up to honor our fallen. So that's what we're doing for that.
Very good.
Y'all want to hear about some other stuff?
Let's see, certainly. Right ahead.
The next event we have coming up after Memorial Day is our Dog and Cat Days of Summer Event. It's scheduled for June 17. I've talked to several rescue organizations, and we hope to have animals for adoption, as well as them talking to people about pet care and adoption. We've got three food trucks onboard. Have several vendors that have signed up. Got all the water slides reserved. I did wanna talk to the council about making this a tax-free or tax-exempt event, so the vendors won't have to handle taxes. And that's something that, you know, if y'all so choose to, we'll put it in resolution form for the next meeting. But just something, you know, for y'all to think about. This is the first event this administration has done with vendors, and I just wanna make it as positive and economically feasible event as possible for them, so that, you know, perhaps we can have vendors work with us in future endeavors.
How's the response so far?
Response is really good. I've had to turn some people away because, with the exception of a couple of ladies that do the same brand of clothing, I didn't wanna duplicate. So we have cosmetic salespeople that, like Mary Kay, I've only accepted one.
Sure.
And I've let the other, and another couple of groups also, and I'll just let them know if something happens and we're not able to have the vendor that's signed up, I'll get back in touch with them.
Right.
But I'm limiting it to, you know, one of each particular brand.
Okay. And what date was that, Dog and Cat?
June the 17th. It's a Saturday. We'll be doing this over close to the splash pad.
And the time of it?
Nine to one.
Okay.
That actually is a milestone anniversary for myself and my husband, and I figured since we weren't gonna do anything big, I'd throw a big party and invite the whole city.
All right. Okay. Next will be Sergeant Sanders. I think he has about 30 slides, so everybody get ready. Here we go.
No slides.
No slides. Hey.
All right. Thanks for having me today.
Certainly. Glad to be here.
So, I wanted to give you a little rundown on the first 15 days of May.
Okay.
But then the calls for service, broke them down, and if you see, you can see where we spend most of our time out there taking calls. We've had 54 burglar alarms, 27 civil complaints, 63 closed patrols, 42 investigations, and that could be also where a report is written for. Sometimes a detective will just have somebody write up complaint as an investigation, and they will charge it later. Usually that deals with the white-collar type crimes, fraud, the forgeries, and things like that. We get a lot of suspicious complaints. We've had 60 of those. We've had 64 traffic violations. Now, if you look at the, at the bottom of the page, you see where I broke it down into different traffic categories. All that equates to 118 calls. Now, a lot of that is deputy-initiated. Some people don't include that in a, in a report, but I feel that, you know, they're paying us, and you should, you should know what we're doing while we're out there. We get quite a few reckless driving complaints on 98 speeding, passing in the turn lanes, passing on curves and hills. We've responded to a few traffic hazards and some traffic accidents. Some other things that's been taking up our time, we've had some theft of properties and property damages. Now, thefts of properties can be both residential and commercial. I didn't separate them. We've had a few medical emergencies, and that could be mental problems, somebody threatening suicide, things like that. We've had 15 domestics that we've had respond to. Some arrests were made in those. Disorderly conducts, and we've had a few auto burglaries. Usually what'll happen is they'll, they'll go through a neighborhood, and they'll hit several cars in one night. And what's really been disturbing to me is there's a lot of the vehicles that we've been doing the reports on lately have been unlocked, and they've had weapons in them. So, people are leaving their weapons in their cars and not locking them, or at least taking them. We've had 18 911 hangups. The rest of the calls, you know, you'll get a smattering of, you know, warrant traffic, attempted contacts, animal nuisances, whether it be a dog bite or doggies in the road that we have to try and get them out. We've had two persons with weapons. We've had one accidental shooting over around Summit, and we've had one runaway. So that pretty much covers the first two weeks of May. Any questions?
The tickets, obviously quite a few. What percentage, if you know, if not, I'll ask you later, will result in fines as opposed to warrants? Do you know?
I would have to get, get that number later.
I'm just curious.
We do write a lot of warrants, giving people the, you know, the benefit of the doubt first, first time, especially whenever we work an area pretty stringent the first time. Right now, we have two extra units up here that I'm directing for some traffic, traffic control.
Right.
And also some hotspots down by the Dairy Queen and Double Branch.
Right.
And up on Lock Road.
Right.
I've been telling them to saturate those areas pretty heavy, make traffic stops, and, you know, try and get some information.
Good. 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 Well, that's great, because there's an official minimum amount of speeding around here.
I'm gonna try and slow them down.
Okay. Gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good. We appreciate your efforts. Thank you. Good report.
Be careful.
Yes, sir.
Very good. All right. Moving on. Financial report, review of checks for signature. Is there any discussion on the checks? Does everyone have a chance to see the checks? Anybody not see the checks? Anybody? All right. Any questions about any checks that are in the box? Very good. Moving on to Item 6. Review and discussion of proposed ordinances. 6A, An Ordinance Establishing Policies and Procedures for Installation of Driveway Culverts Within City Rideaway by the City of Sims at the Request of Property Owners. This has been on the agenda before. Give you a minute to look at that. Are there any questions? And Jason's here, if you have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, we have discussed this many times, and Franklin's happy, so I'm ready to move on with this.
Okay.
Emotionally approve that, we'll get to it.
All right. Anyone else who have any questions about?
No. No. Okay.
No discussion or questions on Item 6A. Item 6B is an ordinance to annex certain properties into the corporate limits of the City of Sims. Let's see, we have Tyler.
He's over here.
Okay, do you want to leave the briefing on that? Seeing the packet, the annexations are listed. Tyler will go through the details and answer any all questions.
All right. There'll be 27 annexations total on this bush. There's two in Camilla Grove, which is Sanqua and all that, which is on the south side of Wars Lane. There's three properties at Lynn Drive, which intersects with Orchard Ridge around the north side of Power Tower. There's gonna be four in Camilla Place, which is off of Moffett, right there at the gas station near the Power Tower, Moffett intersection on the northeast side. We have one property in Eastwood, which is off of McCrory. Four off of Chutney Bailey Road, which is right there in the Spice Pond Rosemary area. One off of Oak Tree Drive, which is on the north side of Moffett, right here by the Goodwill and stuff like that. And then there's 12 properties in the New Bern Road, Joella, 158 area. A lot of those were ones that we weren't able to annex last time due to there being conflicts with some of the annexation petitions, whether that was a property owner not signing it, or there not being a witness signature. Mr. Smith did a good job attracting those people down to bridge the gap, so we could get that. So, overall, 27.
I think you've done your research on it, but is in terms of roads and culverts and drains, are these, these areas above satisfactory?
They should be.
In terms of long-term?
Yes, sir.
So none of them are gonna need any immediate attention?
No, sir. I'm working on this on this time.
Mr. Webb, questions?
You are presenting these to be voted on tonight.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. In the, in the regular session.
As usual, very good work. I don't know how y'all have time for all this. I know Mr. Smith did a lot of this stuff, but still a lot of work.
Any questions? Mr. Smith, any questions?
We're moving forward on the annexation.
Okay. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
I know you did a lot of work. I know the city clerk did a lot of work together. Thank you both. Appreciate it. Okay. Moving on. Commending Ordinance 2017-02, An Ordinance to Extend the City of Sims Alabama Municipal Fire Department Coverage in Areas Beyond the Current City of Sims Police Jurisdiction to Include Areas Formerly Covered by the Sims Volunteer Fire Department. This is in keeping with the litigation we were involved with, that our attorney was deeply involved in. I'll let Mr. Arlington comment on that, if you would. That's Item 6C.
Yes, sir. This is just a amendment we've already done. It doesn't change the results of anything. Basically, we had a little hearing Friday, status conference with the judge, and had to address a couple of issues, and it was brought out that he wanted the ordinance to refer to the court order as bringing about the whole ordinance in the first place.
Sure.
So that, we just added that language, and that's the only change. It's the same result.
Okay. Basically, what we've all seen before, with about eight or nine words added. Any questions? Mr. Webb? Just me?
Well, this is, again, this is keeping the faith with all the people that our fire department has taken care of for many, many years, so we're continuing to that, and of course, it is a technicality on this occasion, but we do mention and affirm to everybody out beyond the city limits, beyond our PJ, that we are still following through on our promise to take care of their fire protection.
Right. Okay. Mr. Platt?
Any comments?
Just, just like Mr. Smith says, I mean, it was a time coming, but there it is, where we need to be.
Very good. Very good. And I believe acknowledgement of his hard work. Chief Brooks, thank you for covering those areas with your, with your firefighters. Appreciate it. Very good job. I get a lot of phone calls, but I don't get many about the fire department, except how good you are.
That's great.
So I just want to share that. Okay. All right. Moving on. Item 7. Review and Discussion of Proposed Resolutions. This is one we looked at earlier. This is adopting procedure for disposition of surplus and/or unneeded city personal property. Very well. This is one, I believe, that your department put together, under your supervision. Go ahead and take a look at that. And basically, as we've talked about before, that we are getting our arms around the important issue of making sure that we account for all city property that comes into our possession, and by the same token, when property no longer becomes useful or serviceable, we have procedure that we are asking to put in place to accommodate the disposition of it. So that's basically what we're doing. It's a cycle. Property coming in, being used, property going out. Any questions? Mr. Webb?
I was somewhere from my house over there, in Salem. My wife was wondering about that.
Okay. Okay. All right.
No, no question. Thank you.
Mr. Platt?
Good.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
No questions.
No questions. All right. Very good. Moving on. 7B. Authorizing the Mayor to Submit an Application to the South Alabama Regional Planning Commission and to the Alabama Department of Transportation for a Transportation Alternative Program TAP Grant. This is, I wanna have read, an extenuation of our sidewalk project. Jason, what phase would this address?
This would be Phase 3. We've, we've already started 2015 and 2016, which we were awarded, and those are going on right now, so if we wanna continue doing this, we can apply for, but this year we have to apply for two years in a row, so 17 and 18, if we wanna do this. This, we have to go ahead and submit by June 2nd. So they're asking for a resolution to, to basically say that you're committing to doing it if we get the funding.
And as we discussed earlier, one of the wonderful benefits of the TAP grants is, in this case, I think, again, it's the city only puts up 20%. That's an outstanding offer, especially when you consider with each new piece of sidewalk that we add, it increases the ability of people to get around. Once the, kind of in conjunction with that, once the intersection work at Wolf and McCrory and 98 is completed, that's gonna be much more streamlined. So, there's gonna be a way to push a button and cross the interstate, cross the highway without being worried about your life, so that will be good. So I think we're getting there, and the idea is for people to be able to walk around all over without having to dodge cars and keep themselves safe and sound. It'll be great. All right. Any questions, Mr. Webb?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Is this tied to any particular engineering firm, or is this just independently submitted by the city?
No, it has to be submitted by a professional engineering firm. The, the firm that has offered to, to submit this for us is Neil Schaefer and Associates, and they've done, they did our first TAP grant that went pretty successful.
Yeah.
The one that's already been approved.
Good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, they do, they do require that it go through a firm. I wish the city could just do it, but being an Alda type grant, it's gotta have a lot of oversight.
Right. Will it be, it'll be the same width sidewalk?
Yes, it'll be, well, it depends on what section. We, we've submitted kind of like an overall wish list of, of areas that we'd like to do.
Right.
And it just depends on which section we go for, but I think the, the next section's either gonna be on the north side of Moffett that goes into that first Pomona subdivision, or on the south side of Moffett to continue from Fire Tower and start going towards this way, towards the east.
Okay.
So there'll be a combination, the master plan shows a combination of sidewalks and multi-use paths, which could be used for sidewalks and bikes. So depending on what section we go for, we just haven't quite figured that out yet.
Okay.
But that's pretty much all it is, sidewalks, bike paths, things like that, so we don't wanna get too fancy, because the cost can trickle up, and there is a cost limit. I believe that the funding, the threshold is like $250,000 is the max that you can apply for per year, so that means, that keeps the city's part manageable.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Very good. Moving on. Item C. Authorizing the Expenditure of Funds to Contract with Sunbelt Fire to Provide Fire Truck Pump Test. As you know, our fire trucks have to be tested on a regular basis. Chief, anything you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, this is just a contract with Sunbelt Fire to come in and test our pumps. They're rated at a certain capacity.
Right.
And this is the time we need to, you know, if it's gonna fail, it should fail during testing, not along the fire scene.
Right.
So, this is just verbiage stating what's gonna be done, when it's gonna be done, what it's gonna cause, and it's, it's a contract between us and Sunbelt.
Okay. Very good. Any questions?
I'm good.
Mr. Smith?
No question.
To Webb?
No.
Okay. All right. Good. Moving on. Item D. Authorizing the Expenditure of Funds to Purchase Items for the 2017 City of Sims Memorial Day Event. Discuss this briefly. It's in your packet. Give you a minute to look at that. Are there any questions? Anything else?
Good.
On that?
No questions.
Very good. Moving on. Authorizing the Expenditure of Funds for Advertising in the Call News. This is in keeping with hurricane preparedness. As you know, we're moving closer to the season, and that is circuit's business. City Clerk, can you elaborate on what the advertisement would be?
Yes, sir. Basically, what the, the local cities will do is offer some tips and advice on how to prepare for the hurricane season, and ours, Ms. Denise has taken some information from the Red Cross website and sort of compacted it down to helpful tips, and she may be able to elaborate more on what it covers, but it, that's all it is, is each municipality will give some advice on how to prepare and what to do in the, in the case of emergencies.
Educational programs.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Mr. Webb, any questions? Mr. Platt? Very good. Moving on. Authorizing the Expenditure of Funds to Purchase a Live Streaming Camera for the Purpose of Publishing City Council Meetings on the City of Sims Website. I think this is in keeping with our desire to be more user-friendly, and I believe it will be good for the city to have its own sponsored stream of the city council meetings, in addition to any others that may be out there. In any event, are there questions? Mr. Smith?
No question.
Mr. Webb?
No.
Mr. Platt?
Good idea.
Very good. Moving on. Committee Reports. Finance.
Mr. President.
Yes.
This is a financial report with charts, graphs. Let me hand out a few copies of these.
Mr. Webb? Mr. Platt?
If you look at the lower left-hand graph, you'll see the, basically, the raw data, the raw dollars income, total income, total expense over the past seven months, and you notice we've had some, some rugged moments there, and kept, be a little concerned for a while. Always concerned, but in the case, you'll see at the end there, our income is above the total expense line. That's, that's good. The ups and downs from month to month on financial reports are sometimes disturbing because they're not the result of good news or bad news, but just by timing, paydays and receipts of income and that. So up on the upper left-hand corner, you'll see a comparison, two different ways of looking at the same data. You'll see what amounts to our retail sales in the blue line there, and you'll see it jumps up, jumps down, but if you look at, you know, three-month trailing average in the green line, you'll see it smooths it out a little bit. And the point we're making here is, we don't wanna get overly excited by any one month's up or down movement there. Need to look at average over a period of time, and that's why we're looking at seven months. months. Over on the upper right-hand graph there, you'll see a total expense in red, and you'll see the averaged non-franchise income, that is your retail sales, in the blue line, where you see some averaging occurring there, and it's smoothed it out. And this is pretty significant because, again, you'll see that the retail sales tax is well above, or comfortably above, the total expense line. And in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see the cumulative balance. This is the difference between income and expenses, all income, all expenses, for the last seven months. And you see where we had a low point there, but we flamed out of it, and we're looking pretty good at seven months. So the hard data, that all the dollars and numbers are in the chart and the sheet behind that, but that gives you the picture of what's going on. And if you have any questions, let me know. I may be able to answer, or not.
Very good. Good work, Mr. Smith. Mr. Webb, do you have any questions?
No.
Of course, not limited, of course, to now, but, you know, any questions you have now or afterwards, of course, Mr. Smith will answer.
Mr. President, one item, I would like feedback from all the council members about how in the future you believe we should present this data.
Sure.
Or publish reports so that everybody can get the picture of what's going on.
Great. Understood. Understood. Mr. Platt, any other questions?
Mr. Smith, if the franchise fees are not included here, are they being?
All right. The answer to that is they came in all at one time, and they so distorted the overall, and they are somewhat different character in their income, but the retail sales, which do come in monthly, so we're going to be, the finance committee is going to be looking at that situation and see if the people are paying them timely fashion or not.
Are those fees allocated to any specific use, the franchise fees, that you're going to give upon?
No, they're general fund. They are in the fact retail sales, it's just that they come in for something, something different going on there, and it so highly distorted the chart that I separated them out. Any other questions?
Mr. Platt, any?
Well, I'm glad we have Mr. Smith looking at it because I know how tight he is.
We're hedging.
Yeah, some of those lines are a little close. We might need to pull back a little bit more.
Good point. Excellent point.
Yes. Questions? Very good. All right. That finishes financial report. Next would be Mr. Webb. Public Works, roadways and roadways.
Not much has changed, in my people opinion, from the last meeting we ran.
Are we still making progress with the light project?
Yes. I contacted Christie Seibert Nigle, I don't know how to pronounce her last name.
Right.
She's our contact over there with LEDs. I spoke with her a little over a week ago to check and see where it was as far as the order coming in. She says she's still waiting on that. She says she would let me know as soon as they get those in, then the crews will be sent out to go ahead and get that started. She apologized for any delays. She just said, you know, remember, there's multiple parts for each light that they're waiting on, whether it's, you know, 20-foot mound or 10-foot mound to compensate for what we need for our roadways.
But you feel comfortable?
Yes, sir.
With the progress so far? Okay?
I would like it to be a little quicker, but...
Sure. Okay. But you just think time is legitimate?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Any questions for Public Works? Okay. Public Safety. Mr. Platt?
Well, I can't remember if we reported on this at the last meeting or not, but the mayor and several council members met with Sheriff Cochran, and out of that meeting, we had a nice meeting with the chief and public works, sergeant and captain, and then we came to a pretty good understanding, and as a result of that meeting, we've got quite a few more deputies on the road, we've got more state troopers. I hope y'all don't get a ticket. Sheriff, did y'all, did y'all call those state troopers in? I know it was mentioned of it, but there's a lot more of them around. Did y'all actually call them, or?
I didn't. I don't know if someone else did, but I have noticed a large presence of troopers in the area.
Yeah, well, if you want to know where they hide, then let me know. And these numbers that Sergeant presented, I think there's some way we need to get this to the public because I've received a lot of calls last week or two, and the mayor tells me he's received a lot of calls, and if you don't know what is going on around town, you 're going to think, well, you know, I'm not getting the services I need, but you've got to look at these numbers here and say, your call was just one of 500 and something, or 800 and something. But we have one more neighborhood sergeant that we're going to concentrate on, and I think people are already moving out of some of them you've been in, so that's good. That looks really good.
Very good. Any comments on Public Safety Committee? Very good. Mr. Platt, you were also proud enough to help out as co-chair.
Yes, sir.
Parks and Rec. Do you want to give a report there?
I can. We can move, we had quite a schedule on the parks and recreation, but to just kind of get to the high points, you know, about the LED lights, and we had a set of rules and regulations that we wanted to post at the parks, and I think we sent those to the city attorney to look over, make sure that, you know, all that looks kosher. And Mr. Franklin has proceeded with the environmental assessment that he needs for the park over there, and that's underway. And let's see, what else do we do?
Mr. Platt, the LED lights, that was for the, was we going to bring that to the council for the pavilions?
No, sir. You said that you had the budget.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah. What Mr. Franklin is talking about there, you know, we had worked out a proposal for a fence around Comedia Park, but I think the increased sheriff's office patrol, and I don't know what other factors may be involved, but Public Works says that's really weighed down, so we're just going to kind of hang around and not spend that money for the fence, and Mr. Franklin's going to take it out of his budget and put some security cameras over there. And that's pretty much it. The other stuff is just kind of small stuff.
Very good. Very good. Any questions for Parks and Rec? Are there any council, legal council or staff comments? Okay. Any other business that might come before the meeting?
Hey, I got one comment, please, if I could.
Sure.
On behalf of the chief, we were doing some repairs at Station 1 so they can get moved back in.
Right.
We've done a lot of infrastructure repairs as far as on the building, but there are some drainage issues. Water from the parking lot is coming into the building and it's causing some of the bottom of the, there.
I bet she's got to be.
Okay, that is. But anyway, we've got some drainage problems, and it's getting into the building and it's causing the wood to rot. We've replaced the rotted wood, and now we need to come back in and cut back some of that asphalt and concrete in order to make a little swell to divert the water out.
Where's that at?
Station 1.
Oh.
So you can see that the height of the road, all that water is coming straight into their, into their bays, and they've got a little trough there to try to catch it, but it's just overwhelmed by the water. So what we want to do, Public Works in-house, is cut a little swell to go through there and correct that problem. It is going to cost a little bit more money than what chief has in his budget, and I'm still thinking it'll be less than $5,000. So he may need a little assistance on it, on his budget for that repair. We need to do that pretty quick so he can get into the station, but we didn't have time to put it on the agenda to request that money.
Well, you can put your, put your proposal together for the next meeting.
We'll take that. We'll take that.
So do we want to wait on the repairs till we get approval?
Mayor, if it's not possible, let's not wait. The chief inherited this problem, and it's not fair for it to come out of his budget. Can we just go ahead and have it put on the agenda for a regular meeting?
I think we'll redo that. The regular meeting?
Yes, sir. Can we do that? I know that raining and all of this swamp.
This is a virtual emergency here.
You know, that's unanticipated, and it's, so, and I looked real close, that looks like real rain and not fire hoses, so.
Y'all were standing off to the side. Well, I don't see a problem with that.
You can add it if it's unanimous.
If it's unanimous. We will add it to the regular session as an item if there's unanimous agreement on that. Very good. And I'm glad that Public Works and the fire department are taking the time to get this right before we move in there now, because we talked about that a while back. And before you begin operations, we want to make sure everything's correct and straight, so this is the right order.
I just want to thank Jason and his crew, especially Mark. They've done an excellent job.
Oh, yeah, I've seen them over every day. Every day.
You know, it's just, that water coming down off that hill is just overwhelming.
Sure.
That little trench, and so I think he's got a plan.
Okay.
And I think that that plan is going to work for him.
Very good. How's the road holding up a lot?
It's holding up good.
Are you imagining it as you need to?
Yeah, if we need, if we need to do it, we'll do it. We haven't had to yet. I talked to Jimmy, I talked to South Alabama, he told us today, they plan on making that repair, so you're going to be down probably in a day or so, so I guess you could go and make that.
We can, we can work around it.
Yeah. An important day to check, that might be Friday. Check it Friday morning while your work crews are still here. Because if we, if it's a problem, they don't catch it Friday, they won't be back Monday. Are you sending people over there, or paying you on Friday?
I'm just kind of leaving it up to chief to give me the download.
Chief, can you check and?
Yeah, we'll give him some updates.
Friday would be a good day to fix it.
Right.
It's been pretty good, though. It hasn't really, from the time they've installed the extra rock and stuff, I don't think it's really deteriorated from there.
Yeah. I was there about a week ago, and it seemed to be holding, but, you know, one good rain can wash it out. Okay. Very good. Very good. Any other council, legal council or staff comments?
I just want to say thanks to Denise continuing to keep the calendar flowing and on our committee, and I just appreciate the work that she does constantly and creating new events and such as well. So, thank you.
I concur. Thank you, Denise. Thank you.
I think we need to find out who her agent is. She sure does get a lot of face time, you know, on camera, you know.
Very good.
Move adjourned?
Second.
Second.
All of them? Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. We will begin again in about 15 minutes at 4:00. Thank you all for your attendance. All right. Okay. What time is it?
4:05.
Time is 4:05. Regular session, council chamber meeting is called. Order. City of Sims, roll call.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Watts.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Here.
Councilmember Platt.
Here.
Councilmember Shari is absent.
Very good. Roll call is finished. Today, we have a special guest, and we're going to ask, before I talk about him, for the invocation, Mr. Byrd, would you be willing to do the invocation?
Yes.
And Sergeant First Class Richardson, a good friend of mine, a fellow, well, I'm former now, but he is a current ROTC instructor and a very good friend, has volunteered to do the pledge after I asked. So we'll do the invocation and the pledge allegiance.
Let's pray. Our Lord and Heavenly Father, we thank you for our beautiful day you've given to us. We thank you for every provision that's ours in you. We thank you, Lord, for the cross. We thank you, Lord, for the sinless life that led to the cross. We thank you, Father, that you, through Jesus, died in our place. We thank you, Lord, that you're a ministry to us today as our high priest. We receive, we magnify, and we glorify your name, for, Lord, you only are worthy of praise and honor and glory. Give us wisdom, Lord, in this meeting to carry out this business. We thank you, Lord, that we'll always give you praise and honor and glory for the things that we accomplish, and we thank you, Lord, for giving us the wisdom to seek to glorify your name in everything that we do. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Great. Let's see. Thank you. And he's especially happy, Sergeant First Class Richardson, because school ends in two weeks, right? Two weeks. That smile you see growing gets bigger every day. We're glad you could join us.
Yes, sir.
All right. Moving along now to item 5, which is consideration of the minutes from the regular council session on May 2nd, the regular session. You all have those in your packets.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Very good. Minutes for the regular council session of May 2nd are approved. I don't believe we have any presentation or guest speakers tonight.
Yes.
Very good. Moving on to item number 7, financial report, approval of checks, signature. I believe the checks went around during the work session. Has everyone had a chance?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Mr. President, I move we approve.
Second. Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. Very good. The checks for signature are approved. Very good. Moving on to item 8, ordinances. Item A, ordinance 8A, does not require immediate consideration as it was on the agenda several weeks ago. This is an ordinance establishing policies and procedures for installation of driveway culverts within city right-of-way by the City of Sims at the request of property owners. Is there any discussion on this? Mr. Webb, have you come in?
No.
Mr. Platt? No, sir. Mr. Webb? Mr. Upward, have you? Flats? Mr. Smith?
This covers an area of overlap between the citizens' private property and the city's property of the right-aways where we intersect, and covers the ability of our city to serve our citizens in a very special way. I move we approve.
Second. Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. Very good. Ordinance 8A is approved. Ordinances for consideration B and C will require a motion for immediate consideration as they were not on the agenda earlier.
So move.
Second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes. Very good. The ordinances are approved for review tonight and consideration and voting. Item 8B, ordinance to annex certain properties into the corporate limits of the City of Sims. I believe we discussed this during the work session. Are there, it's in your packet. Tyler, Mr. Tyler, I asked you, briefed us earlier on this. Are there any questions on the annexation? Mr. Smith?
Some of these people, Mr. President, have been waiting for quite some time, and finally I'm happy that we were able to bring them in.
Yes.
Satisfy the technicalities, and we'll be welcoming them into the city.
Very good. Mr. Webb?
Will come in, just happy to have him.
Yes, sir. Mr. Watts? Mr. Platt? Any comments?
No.
Very good.
Mr. President, I move we approve.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote.[1785.54]
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes, ordinance to annex certain properties into the corporate limits of the City of Sims is approved. Item C, amending ordinance 2017-02, an ordinance to extend the City of Sims, Alabama Municipal Fire Department coverage area beyond the current City of Sims police jurisdiction to include areas formerly covered by the Sims Volunteer Fire Department. We discussed this during the work session as well. Essentially, it is the same as the last ordinance we approved a few weeks ago, except for the addition of seven or eight or nine different words. Council is, is fully briefed on this, and walked us through this to make sure we met all the legal requirements. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Smith?
No, sir, I believe we still need to suspend the rules for immediate consideration on this one?
We did it, all right. We did B and C.
Okay, very good. I move we approve.
Did we do B and C?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we did B and C, okay. Second.
Yes, sir.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes, very good, the ordinance to extend the City of Sims limit is approved. Very good, moving on to resolutions 9A. 9A does not require immediate consideration as it was on the agenda previously to tonight, this afternoon, this is resolution adopting procedure for disposition of surplus and/or unneeded city personal property. Is there any discussion on 9A, on this? As we discussed before, this is, this is addressing the life cycle of equipment and systems that come into the ownership of the city. We have a policy in place now, and a property book clerk in place to account for all property coming in, and this will close the loop in terms of giving us procedures for disposing of any property once it's no longer useful or in use or otherwise not intact. Is there a question?
Mr. President, I'm glad to see this really good move for priest responsibility and accountability and transparency in our city government, and I'll be moving to adopt.
Very good. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes, very good, resolution 9A is approved. Resolutions B through G will require immediate consideration before they can be discussed and voted on. Is there a motion for immediate consideration of the items B through G?
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes, very good, these resolutions are approved for consideration tonight. The first one, 9B, authorizing the mayor's submitted application to South Alabama Regional Planning Commission into the Alabama Department of Transportation for a transportation alternative program grant, TAP grant. We discussed this earlier during the work session, this is for Phase 3 of the sidewalk project, good. Phase 3 of the sidewalk project, our contribution would be 20%, and this is federal, right? Federal grant, 20% and federal government would pay 80%. These have been very successful in the past, I think you can see by all the sidewalks springing up around here, so I think it's very good. Is there discussion on item 9B? Mr. Webb, any questions?
None.
Mr. Platt?
I'd like to say that we need to really work hard to help these guys in Public Works get these things, because they've made a lot of positive comments, and they also made a presentation to Parks and Rec Committee, something on down the road, but, you know, it, it all looks good, so we need to pay attention to this, do what we can to help them get these grants.
Good, good. Any other questions about TAP grants? Okay, move we approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes, item is approved, resolution is approved. Moving on, resolution C, authorizing the expenditure of funds to contract with Sunbelt Fire to provide fire truck pump testing. We discussed this earlier in the work session, are there any questions about item C? As you know, these pump tests are required to certify our vehicles, and when you have the test, we're certified for a year, is that it?
Yes, sir, and it's required by ISO.
And it's every vehicle we own?
It's just, just the trucks that have pumps on them.
Okay, just the trucks that have pumps.
Yes, sir.
Very good, all right.
Once a year is often, often enough?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And that certifies you for 12 months from that date?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good, very good, all right. Are there any other comments, Mr. Webb?
None.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Platt?
I can move we approve that.
Second, okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes, very good, item C is approved. Item D, authorizing the expenditure of funds to purchase items for the 2017 City of Sims No More Event. Mr. Denise discussed this during the work session, are there additional comments on this item? Mr. Webb?
None.
Mr. Platt?
No, sir.
Mr. Watts?
Again, I appreciate Ms. Daly doing a great job.
Yes.
Also with the newsletter she presents every month, too, that's a great asset.
Yes.
Very good.
Thanks again.
Mr. President, I move we approve of this.
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes, very good. Next item is authorizing the expenditure of funds for advertising in Call News. This is a, an advertisement for citizen awareness and citizen education, and we discussed this earlier in the work session as well, it's, it's focusing on the upcoming hurricane season. Are there any comments, Mr. Webb?
Yeah.
Mr. Platt?
All we need to do is much of this as we can, educate everybody, I'm happy with this.
Okay, Mr. Watts?
I just probably don't have any.
Yes.
I agree with that. Mr. Smith?
No question.
Because we hope we don't ever see a hurricane here.
Yep.
But we have to be prepared, and in, along those lines, we had one successful hurricane prepared in this tabletop drill already, and you have another schedule.
Yeah, I'm trying to schedule one for the end of this month. I also had a meeting with Mike Evans, the EMA, I visited the office down there and had a good conversation on the resources that are available to do some other things.
Correct. Okay, good, all right.
Make a motion, please.
Second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes, next item is the camera, do we have that?
Sir.
The camera?
Yes, sir.
Okay, oh, okay, very good, very good. This is for item F, this is authorization for the expenditure of funds to purchase a live-streaming camera for the purpose of publishing city council meetings on the City of Sims website. I'll read this one. Whereas the City of Sims, Alabama, has the need to purchase a live-streaming camera for the purpose of publishing city council meetings on the City of Sims website for citizens to view, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Sims, Alabama, while in regular session on the 16th day of May, 2017, then an amount not to exceed $500 has been approved for the city to purchase a live-streaming camera for the aforementioned purpose, approved this day. Is there any additional comment, Mr. Webb?
I have one question for council.
Yeah.
It says the Sims website, but would it make any difference if they wanted to put it on the Facebook site or anything else, would it make any difference, or?
I don't think it would.
Enough for me.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve.
Mr. Webb, any more questions? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, motion approved was made and seconded, roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes, the next item was drainage. We have to.
Yes, I have said it one more time.
Oh.
Hey, Baker. On this one, I think we also need to vote to add that to the agenda since it wasn't on the agenda in the first place.
So move.
Second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes, item is added to the agenda. This is the last resolution, authorization for the expenditure for the repairs to property in the City of Sims Fire Department Station Number 1. Essentially, it says, the City of Sims, Alabama, has the need to repair the buildings, infrastructure, parking lot and driveway at City of Sims Fire Department Station Number 1 due to drainage issues and wear and tear, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Sims, Alabama, while in regular session on the 16th day of May, then an amount not to exceed $5,000 has been approved for the City of Sims for repairs on the aforementioned items. Obviously, this is a public safety issue, obviously, as we transition from the fire training facility to Station 1, we need to make sure Station 1 is good and old, stood up and ready to operate, and of course, we can't have water flooding through the front door, so that's, that's where we are. Hopefully, it'll be less than that. Okay, and I know you'll get it down to as low a amount as possible. All right, very good. Any further discussion, Mr. Webb?
None.
Platt?
No, sir.
Mr. Smith?
I move for immediate consideration.
Roll call vote.
We've got immediate consideration.
I think we already did that, yeah, I thought so.
Yeah, I move we approve.
Yeah. Very good, is there a motion approved?
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Watts. Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes, very good. Moving on to committee reports, we had committee reports earlier during the work session, financial report, Mr. Smith, anything to add from earlier?
No, I think the report, written report speaks for itself there.
Very good. Roadways and right-aways, Mr. Webb, anything to add from your earlier report?
No.
Mr. Platt, anything to add from public safety or Parks and Recreation?
I will say that a comment was made during the work session about how well the Public Works and the Fire Department are working together, which prompts me to want to remind the council that during that tabletop exercise, we did discover some communications improvements, and those will be coming before the council, I hope, soon, but it's just to further enhance the communications between those two departments.
That's very good, yeah, that's critical as we get deeper into the season.
Yes.
All right, let's see here. Comments and announcements, before we get to public comments, I wanted to give an update on the library situation so everybody would know, I know that's, that's been a topic of consideration and discussion. Yesterday, I had a meeting with Commissioner Hudson downtown, attendance, in attendance with me, Mr. Smith, our attorney, Commissioner Hudson was there with her legal staff and her staff, and the library manager, the comptroller, and a couple of the board members were